Good morning. We'd like to welcome everyone to our Mesa City Council Study Session for the morning of August the 26th. I'll note that all of our council is present. The first item on our agenda is to review and discuss items on the agenda for the August 30th regular council meeting. Counsel, do you know off the bat if there's questions or additional information you need on any of these agenda items? Mr. Brady, does staff have any? Mr. Thompson?
I was going to ask if staff could give us a presentation on 6A.
6A?
Yeah.
Oh, yes, updating the massage ordinance?
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Counsel. Thank you for the opportunity, for allowing us to come before you this morning to present proposed changes to the city's existing massage ordinance. Mr. Jeff Baylon, our police legal advisor, and I will discuss the need for the proposed changes and how these changes, if implemented, will strengthen the city's ability to address illicit massage businesses that operate in plain sight under the pretense of providing health and therapeutic services. Mr. Baylon has worked closely with the city attorney's office and police officers tasked with enforcing violations of the ordinance and the American Massage Therapy Association throughout this process. The American Massage Association represents 95,000 licensed therapists in the United States and has commended the city's work in drafting this ordinance. In part, the AMTA has stated, "We commend the removal of language that would have allowed loopholes in unlicensed and untrained individuals to fraudulently practice under the guise of massage therapy in the city of Mesa." The current draft does an effective job of adding provisions to protect the public as well as upholding the established standards of the massage therapy industry. The draft ordinance balances licensing requirements in a manner that is fair and equitable while providing the enforcement tools needed to address illicit businesses. As stated, the city of Mesa recognizes that massage therapy is a viable profession offering the public valued health and therapeutic services. The regulatory changes offered in the proposed draft seeks to support the massage therapy industry while ensuring that criminal enterprises do not have an opportunity to prey on our community. These changes will provide the city with the needed tools to eliminate criminal organizations that currently operate within the city of Mesa. Polaris is a nonprofit, non-governmental organization that works to combat and prevent sex and labor trafficking in North America. Polaris operates the U.S. National Human Trafficking Hotline, which connects victims and survivors to support and services throughout the country. It takes tips from people about suspected situations of human trafficking. From that work, the organization has built one of the largest data sets of human trafficking in the United States. According to the data gathered, the Polaris Project: Human Trafficking and Massage Businesses is the second most common type of trafficking reported to the National Human Trafficking Hotline. According to recently published research, there are more than 9,000 illicit massage businesses which operate as fronts for commercial sex spread across every state in the United States. For a sense of scale, consider that Starbucks now has approximately 8,222 company-operated stores in the United States. As of January 2021, the city of Mesa has over 143 massage establishments within its borders. In 2020, 52 new establishments requested licenses and 91 requested renewals. According to online data defined as illicit and erotic massages, there were approximately 113 of these businesses with reviews on these sites that advertise illicit massages. Of those establishments, 63 establishment, or 45% of those that operate within Mesa, are marked as active and erotic within the city of Mesa. Online data services allow users to share information about their experiences at any one of these given massage places within the city of Mesa, which in turn drives illicit traffic into our community. In comparison, the city of Mesa has a disproportionate number of illicit massage businesses. The city of Phoenix spans 517 square miles compared to the city of Mesa's 138 square miles. Yet Phoenix has 44 illicit massage businesses compared to our 63. And as you see on the slide, our other East Valley cities also have an issue with illicit massage businesses within their jurisdictions. This slide depicts the distribution of illicit massage businesses throughout the city. And as you see, there is a split of 50/50, almost 50/50, from the east side to the west side of our city. And this map is a heat map which depicts the concentration of illicit massage businesses and how they're dispersed within the city of Mesa. Mr. Jeff Baylon will now discuss the ordinance highlights.
Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. I'm just going to touch upon three main highlights that the ordinance updates. So first, the definition of massage therapy under state law does not include massage businesses that massage the hands, feet, and head. That is not, if you're doing that, you're not required to get a massage therapy license as well as you're not considered a massage therapist under state law. Unfortunately, this creates a loophole where people will claim this exemption when in reality they're providing illicit unlawful acts, falling into basically not being tracked by law enforcement, and it creates an issue where our folks can't go in and do the inspections and can't hold them accountable for the unlawful acts. And so what the ordinance will do is bring that, bring those types of businesses into the fold by requiring them to get a bodywork establishment license. And bodywork does include, closes the loophole where state law excludes hands, feet, and head from being massaged. The second highlight is that it will add manager, landlord, and owner responsibility. There is a provision that requires that no manager, landlord, or property owner of a massage establishment or bodywork establishment occupant shall knowingly permit or negligently fail to take reasonable actions to prevent criminal activity from occurring, and that's a civil violation. It also requires the applicant to acknowledge criminal nuisance laws, which is a similar provision in state law that can provide liability to those, well, at least criminal responsibility to those that don't do essentially what our code says as well. And so it also adds a habitual offender policy or provision that if you continuously violate this section of our city code, that you can be held accountable for a Class 1 misdemeanor. So it gradually can get to that level. And third, it also closes the revolving door concept. A lot of times, you know, businesses that have their license revoked will change their name, change the ownership slightly, transfer it to someone else who perhaps doesn't have the same history, and they can come into the same business, sometimes in the same suite or just two or three doors down. And so this part of the code would prohibit any licensee if within three years the license had been revoked. And so that business could not come into the same location within three years, and a new massage establishment or bodywork establishment cannot go into the same physical suite or business complex within three years, as well as adding that if anyone had had their application denied within one year, that they could not have another application approved within one year. So those are the main highlights of what the ordinance does.
So we are proud as a city to have worked with the American Massage Therapy Association in drafting this ordinance. The AMTA advocates for issues important to massage therapy across the country at the federal, state, and local levels of government. They work for fair licensing of massage in all states. The AMTA was instrumental in providing feedback while drafting this ordinance and approved this draft as fair regulation. And we are open to any questions from the council.
Great, thank you. I'm sure we have some. Who'd like to start?
Well, mine's more of a comment. Everybody, hopefully everybody knows that this has been a passion of mine since I got, before I got elected on council, was to fight the sex and human trafficking. And I think this is one piece of legislation, I think, in the six and a half years I've been on council that I can say I'm absolutely proud of because it's giving you guys another tool in the toolbox to fight this horrific crime. And I want to thank Chief, I want to thank you and Jeff, as well as Jim Smith's office and John Pombier for bird dogging this for me, pushing this through and getting it where it's at today. I think, again, I think this is phenomenal legislation. It'll go far in reducing the number of illicit massage parlors in Mesa. So thank you, guys.
Thank you, sir. And we believe that the provisions that are provided in this ordinance will provide law enforcement with the needed tools to be successful.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Freeman, and then Mr. Haredia.
Thank you, Mayor and Chiefs. My question is, how has this changed for other cities? Is this ordinance comparable to the other cities, and that's why they have less massage illicit businesses? Or obviously, we're strengthening our ordinance. So how's it compare to the other municipalities?
Well, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Freeman, really is a combination of both the ordinance and the enforcement effort on the part of the law enforcement agency. So we see agencies, cities such as Phoenix, who, when we looked at drafting this ordinance, we looked to Phoenix for some of the provisions. The provisions alone aren't enough. To have it on paper does provide the tools, but it's us being able to use and implement those tools that ultimately will make us successful. So when we look at agencies like Phoenix, who are proactive in their enforcement of this illicit massage businesses within their jurisdiction, they have demonstrated a significant level of success. And because of that success, it has displaced those businesses to areas that are perceived to be less enforcement-minded. And unfortunately, like I mentioned throughout the presentation, that there is a disproportionate number of those businesses within the city of Mesa. So it is our plan to come back in six months, in 12 months, to provide the successes that we have had and to show a reduction of those numbers. I'm confident that we'll be able to show a reduction in those numbers within that six to 12-month timeframe.
Good. How many people, Jim, did you want to add something? Go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, Mayor and Counsel, I was going to also add, and also first thank Councilmember Thompson. He planted the seed some time ago, and in fact, I can remember him talking about the revolving door. And so we went out and looked at other cities. And so some of these provisions are actually from California. We went outside the state to find some of this. And so we're actually hopeful that this will become more of the template for other municipalities within Arizona. And then we also worked with the industry and also kept, Councilmember Thompson was very patient while we worked with industry and brought this back. And so this is, this actually goes further. We didn't simply just mimic things from other cities in Arizona. Some of these provisions are actually much more similar to provisions from California, where sex trafficking obviously has also a very dramatic impact. And so we went outside the state to try to look for ways to solve some of these problems.
My last comment, how large of a policing team do you have to enforce this?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, without giving very specific numbers, we have increased the number of individuals who are specifically dedicated to these operations. Those operations are currently ongoing and will continue to be ongoing, and it is a focus that is much more pinpointed today than it has been in the past, and that's why I could sit here and assure you that we will demonstrate success within the next six to 12 months.
Good, thank you. And I applaud Councilmember Thompson for planting that seed, and now we're, hopefully we can get this under control.
And he has done more than plant the seed. He's been all over us, so what?
Well, good.
Mr. Haredia.
Yeah, my question was similar to Councilmember Freeman's, but as far as the ordinance on the, especially the first highlight you had as far as bodywork, what's, is that a proactive or reactive piece? Do they have to get a license, you said, with the city, right? And then we use that? Or does PD use that as a proactive tool if we notice that there is some potential illicit things happening in X parlor?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the question. So it is, it's both reactive and proactive. It's reactive to the facts and the investigations that we've seen, and so we've noticed a trend where, you know, illicit massage businesses are falling into or claiming that exemption. So as a result of that, we've now come up with the bodywork establishment license. And so a business that falls into that category would be required, much like the massage establishment license, be required to get a bodywork establishment license. They would be subject to many of the same rules and regulations that a massage establishment would be licensed to, which is aimed at, you know, ensuring that legitimate businesses are operating in Mesa. So it's proactive in that it will hopefully allow our officers to do the same type of enforcement or ensuring that people are following the rules on massage establishments as they do for bodywork establishments.
And then what's the level of coordination? Not sure if these, some of these massage parlors operate in different cities, and what's the level of coordination we have with other PD departments?
These businesses tend to span not only from our city to others within the valley, but also out of state. So we do work hand-in-hand with our fellow agencies throughout the valley so that our efforts are joint, that we're just not tackling one side of the issue, and we've been very successful at that. And not only at the local level, but the state level as well, working directly with the Attorney General's Office, developing strategies with the AG's office to ensure that we're not overlapping, but yet the work that we do is succinct in terms of being successful at shutting these businesses down.
Perfect. And what's the timeline when we pass this ordinance to implementation?
So that's a good question because the bodywork establishment license will go, that portion, the requirement that a business that falls into that category get a license will take effect on January 1st, 2022. So those businesses will have some time to, you know, make themselves familiar with the rules and regulations and obtain a license. The other provisions affecting massage establishments will be, you know, 30, the usual timeframe of 30 days after adoption.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Luna.
So Chief Rankin, you identified 63 illicit massage parlors in the community. It's not a matter of we can go and just shut them down. Is that correct? So just help me, you know, it begs the question, well, why don't we just go and shut them down? Why can't we do that?
So Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Luna, the sites that we're looking at, these illicit sites, we're all connected through technology, social media. Like-minded people are drawn to specific websites. And so in this case, those that are interested in engaging in this type of illicit behavior are drawn to specific websites that really connect them as a community, and then they share information among themselves, which, again, drives that business to specific businesses here in Mesa. The burden still lies upon us as a law enforcement agency to prove that this illicit behavior is occurring. So although these folks are online very explicitly talking about the sex acts that are occurring within these establishments, we still, as an agency, have to prove that, in fact, that is occurring.
Okay. And so the goal is then to have this ordinance in place in January of this coming year? And once the ordinance is placed, then it'll give you an additional tool to, an attempt to circumvent or to prohibit this kind of behavior?
Well, Council, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmember Luna, actually, many of the provisions will actually go into effect 30 days after adoption. So the things like revolving door for massage establishments, responsibility for landlord and manager and property owner, as well as everything except the requirement that a bodywork establishment get a license, will go into effect 30 days after adoption. So that would be sometime in October, early October, mid-October. And so they all, it could start sooner than January.
Great. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Thompson.
And just so everybody understands what the revolving door is, that's when PD makes a bust, prosecutes as a massage parlor, and tries to shut the business down. The owner will apply for another license under a different name and switch out the madums with the same employees and will be operational the next day. And that was the biggest issue that PD was having, banging their heads on the door because they're making arrests, but yet the massage parlors are still allowed to continue with this illicit activity. So this will actually now go on to the property owner and will shut the business down completely, and they cannot have another massage parlor anywhere on site for three years. So I think this is really, has some really good teeth in it. And that was, you know, my biggest fear was that the teeth of this were going to be pulled out, and to see that you guys went three years was amazing. So thank you for that.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, that is correct. One of the things that we see with these type of businesses and the way they're structured is that the license holder is generally not involved with the business whatsoever. They're just a straw owner of the license, and it's structured in a way that if, it's sustained police raids. So just because we go in and we hit one of these establishments, because they exist in other cities and other states, and the women that operate there, if, what we'll see oftentimes is the owner will state that, well, this is just one rogue employee. We didn't realize this was going on. And simply citing the employee, who quite frankly is a victim of trafficking, does not serve any purpose whatsoever, because what will happen is, because these businesses operate among different states, that employee will just be transferred to California or Nevada. And so it may appear to us that the problem has been resolved, but the reality, the problem hasn't been resolved. And if the business does get shut down, then they just transfer that license to another straw owner.
I think, I had a question similar to Mr. Freeman's, which is, are we now catching up with the other, is the reason that we were out of kilter in, you know, proportion of illicit businesses that we had compared to other communities, is that because we hadn't adopted the bodywork license model yet? Or was there something else going on? And it sounds like, no, our ordinances are probably not very different than our neighbors. We are upgrading with the bodywork loophole, which is great. So my mind was going, well, and looking at your heat map, it looks like the, really, these are focused in parts of town where we have a lot of strip malls. And maybe the reason that we have more is because we have a lot of strip malls in certain parts of town. And so in my mind, that kind of maybe says, well, then, maybe the loophole that we need to close, and that I think this hopefully will, is we need to start holding the owners of these strip malls responsible. They can always say, you know what? I had no idea. Massage therapy is a perfectly legitimate business, and of course, why would I not rent to a massage therapist? But I think we need to now apply these criminal sanctions so that folks who are, you know, claiming to be naive, we can just kind of break that cycle. So if you don't mind, I think what we need to do is education in the real estate community, frankly. Put out notices to the folks who own strip malls that if you are leasing to a quote-unquote "massage" business, you better be very, very careful because there are potential criminal liability, you know, attached to what you're doing. You can't play fast and loose with this industry in our community.
Absolutely, Mayor. I agree wholeheartedly that ultimately the property owners have to be a partner in this success. They can't be apart from this endeavor because ultimately, we rely on them to make good decisions in terms of who their tenants are going to be within those strip malls. And simply taking the first tenant, and let's say that first tenant is someone running a massage business, it will ultimately result in sanctions that they probably would rather not have to deal with. And so I think, again, the answer is, it's a combination of a couple of things. One, it's having an ordinance that provides the teeth, but also having a law enforcement agency that's willing to invest the time, energy, personnel, and resources to tackle the problem. Changing the ordinance itself without any of the enforcement tool won't get us to where we need to be. But that communication portion with the private sector, owners who own these strip malls is also key to that success. We bring them into the fold so that we're working together to achieve the same level of success. Nobody wants sex trafficking or human trafficking in the city, or anywhere else for that matter. Because we're tasked for the safety of this city, we're committed 100% to ensuring that we eliminate that problem from our jurisdiction.
So can you talk for a moment about what is the potential criminal liability that an owner of a building could face? So that we can help get that word out a little bit?
Yes, Mayor. So the criminal liability stems from a provision that says that you can't, you know, knowingly permit or negligently fail to take reasonable actions to prevent criminal and unlawful activity occurring on your property. And so with that, it's not just like, oh, like, we got a violation, here's your criminal citation. There's a process involved. There's, there has to be, they have to be put on notice of what's happening. And so that's going to involve conversations. Sometimes it's face-to-face where we have a sit-down meeting with them. Sometimes perhaps they're out of state where it involves phone calls and letters, and really an attempt to let them know and start a conversation about what's happening on their property. And then really, that's the first step, as well as, you know, making sure that they're kept informed of, if there's a criminal conviction of one of their employees on their property, they need to know about that as well so that we can, you know, build that case to show that they had the opportunity, they were put on notice, and that, you know, at this point in time, you know, there's an expectation that you work with us to try and reduce the issues that are occurring there. And so that is typically what that would look like. And again, that's, you know, there's already a criminal statute in state law that says this as well. And so we have, this just gives us another tool in the toolbox. It's a civil violation initially, but again, if it's so egregious that it rises to the level of criminal conduct to begin with, that is a tool in the toolbox as well to utilize under state law. So I think this ordinance gives the department more options, and it makes it very clear in our city code that this in our city code that this, we've got the tools. We're saying as a city that we are going to do something about it as well, in addition to the state law.
So the bodywork portion, the additional license for people in the quote-unquote "bodywork", you know, segment, that takes effect in January. But the other provisions take effect 30 days from now. So really, I mean, this idea of educating strip mall owners that you can't turn a blind eye to criminal activity on your properties, that's something that we're going to, we can start enforcing before the 1st of January?
Yes, sir. That is correct.
Great. Well, I think we're all looking forward to you coming back and telling us. Frankly, I hope I get a lot of angry phone calls from people who own strip malls that say, I'm being threatened with criminal liability. And we'll say, that's right.
Yes, sir. And we're confident that six and 12 months from now, we'll see a different landscape before us.
Okay. Great. Council, so this is on our consent agenda for Monday? Any additional questions on this? All right, well, thanks again. I'm sorry, Vice Mayor.
I don't have a question, but I just, I have a comment of thanking you for taking this measure. It's so important, especially for the women involved who are victims of this type of crime, and allowing them to have an opportunity to not be sucked into a flourishing crime across our city. Also, I think we have a lot of crime, of course, in the southwest part of our city in a number of ways. And by having these businesses on the storefront of a strip mall or wherever they are, if I'm wanting to open a restaurant or some kind of other business, I don't want to be near that type of activity. That is not attractive to customers. So I think it also allows depressed areas of our city to rejuvenate and to have thriving businesses that are legal. And so overall, I think it'll help in the domino effect of eradicating some crime in our areas of the southwest Mesa. So thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks again. I think you can sense we're all very enthusiastic about this and looking forward to getting updated reports on progress in this. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Council, other questions about our agenda for Monday?
Mayor, can I just highlight a couple of them, though? I think they're important. And just want to express our appreciation on item 5B and 5C. Two, Valley Metro, of course, Councilman Heredia leads that organization for the supplemental funds that we're receiving from the federal government through the American Rescue Plan and others. They're really helping to offset our cost to light rail as well as to ride share. So that certainly is a, that's a kind of an indirect benefit back to the city of Mesa. But those, receiving those funds and allowing us to use them for those purposes certainly will help our own budget. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention. And then also, I think most of you've been briefed, but we also want to express our appreciation to Maricopa County for allocating $5.5 million for rental assistance. Mary's done such a great job of dispersing those funds. And this is a way for us to bring additional funds into the city of Mesa that were allocated to the county. So it benefits the county as well as Mesa residents. And so, as you know, that program has been going very well in Mesa, and we'll certainly be able to continue to use these funds for the next couple of months. So I just wanted to kind of highlight those. Thank you.
Yeah, we can't really gloss over that Valley Metro. I mean, literally, I'm looking at $21 million under one agenda item, 5C.
Yes.
So obviously, this is a huge impact to our transit activities. So, Mr. Heredia, thanks for the money. And then I was interviewed yesterday by the television news station about the $5.5 million that we're getting from the county. This is a great story. Mesa, frankly, I'm proud of our city staff. We are outperforming everybody else. We are doing a great job. I still, I repent frequently for, I think, six or eight months ago, I accused Mary of not being able to get rid of millions of dollars over the course of just a few weeks or months, and she's proven me wrong in a huge way. So we're doing a solid for the county. They weren't eligible to get more federal funds because they had too much money in their bank account. And we were literally down to, I think, a few thousand dollars, because Mary's done such a great job of passing out, between, from the time the pandemic started until now, last, when I talked to Mary yesterday, we've given out $24 million, between rental assistance, mortgage assistance, and utility assistance. And she, and we're not done yet, are we, Mary? So this $5 million will tide us over for a little while, but we're really doing, our staff's doing a great job of getting that money out the door. And the practical effect of that is where you're going to see less evictions, less folks having their utilities shut off, less foreclosures in our community, because staff's doing a great job. So thank you. All right. Council, any other questions about Monday? All right. Moving on to the next item on our agenda for this meeting then, that's item 2A. That's to hear a presentation on the active transportation survey, and for council to provide direction on the types of projects that we'll be funding.
Mayor, members of the council, good morning. My name is RJ Zeder with the Transportation Department. Also with me is Eric Budarian, Deputy Transportation Director for Traffic Engineering. So we're going to give you an overview of some survey work we've done, and look for council direction on how to proceed with funding of active transportation projects throughout Mesa. So as you recall, the voters of Mesa overwhelmingly approved and authorized the city to issue $100 million in general obligation bonds to fund transportation projects across Mesa. Just a quick reminder, the $100 million in bond authorization that was granted to us by the voters allowed us to unlock $62 million in reimbursement money through Proposition 400. So that brings us to a total of $162 million in funding for transportation projects across the city. Let me go back. So as we get into the active transportation component, it's the reimbursement money that we get from MAG that we're then going to use for the $20 million. So it was really a great leveraging of the city funds that obviously is going to release the regional funds, which we can use across town. Active transportation in simple terms is, the goal is to enhance our bicycle and pedestrian network and promote connectivity and health. Projects will be identified through a citywide process. Capital projects are major investments in new transportation infrastructure or major upgrades. This does not include minor routine maintenance or minor upgrades. So as an example, we are going to be moving forward, next month, with a shared bike lane on First Avenue from Country Club East to about Hibbert.
To Hibbert.
Where if you look at, you know, First Avenue, it's very wide, right? Not surprising to anybody. And what Eric's staff have been able to do is come up with essentially a restriping plan that for that whole stretch, we only lose three parking spaces in that whole, you know, three-quarters of a mile or so length, but yet we're able to put in a separated bike lane, which will be clearly marked both with a green epoxy paint, so it stands out along with delineators, so it provides a parallel route to Main Street, where, as you all know, because of light rail, we have what's called a charo, you know, where bikes, you know, people on bikes can literally ride in line with traffic. That's an example of where we're going to use operations funds rather than the capital funds that are the intent of this portion of Mesa moves. Just as points of reference, to construct a shared use path, so you'd picture what's along the canals in the city, or along A.D.A.R. way, where we've done some path work, you're looking at about $200, sorry, $2 million a mile if for a fully improved path. And that would be, you know, whether it's concrete or asphalt, lighting, amenities, you know, so that's sort of a fully improved path section. Complete streets, and the example I mentioned is one of those. If we don't have to do any change to the existing curb line, again, depending on the extent of the work that we do, you're looking at a half million to $2 million a mile. If we start to have to move the curb lines, you know, then it becomes significantly more expensive. So an example of that would be the Stadium Connector path, you know, that connects the Oklahoma Stadium over to Sloan Park, where we built a physically separated bike lane. And along, on both sections of Country Club as well as Alma School, that's where you're getting into much more major construction, you know, to build that literal physical separation of bikes or peds from the motoring public. Shared use path, again, just some examples of what you might see across the city. The largest section of improved path we have currently is the Consolidated Canal, but we also are working currently on Phase 2 of the Mesa Gateway Path down in Councilmember Thompson's district, and that runs along the 202. Complete streets, as I talked about a little bit, this is the, the first picture is the Stadium Connector path. As you can see, it's called Cycle Track because you have two-way traffic within the same physical space. And then the bottom picture is an example of the wider sidewalks that we constructed in the Fiesta District along Southern Avenue. This is a map of what the system currently looks like and will look like. So again, you know, if you look at that blue line, that is the completed path sections in the city. And the blue dots are where we currently have traffic signals for crossings. One of the projects we're working on right now is the Eastern Canal. So if you look to the right of the blue line, you'll see sort of a combination of dash green, blue dots, and sort of stars. We are in the process of installing traffic signals along the entire Eastern Canal. So even though we're not in a position, funding-wise, to fully improve the canal, you know, the property abutting the canal, people are using that, you know, these canals today. Whether they're improved, or they're on dirt, or SRP access road, folks are using these canals, and they're crossing our arterial streets. So the current project will add five signals along the Eastern Canal, and that would give us a complete safe connection all the way down to where the path picks up in Gilbert's.
Yes, from McKellup South.
McKellup South. Thank you, Eric. And then what you see, the future network, so this is very long-term, given the costs of building on our system, but ideally, over time, we would be able to build out the shared use path network across the city using both the SRP canals, there's an RWCD canal, as well as the freeway system that kind of wraps around the city, also a section along the US 60. So, public engagement. We started our initial conversations with the Transportation Advisory Board back in January. We did have a discussion with council back in March. In April, we talked about the public survey, which Eric will jump into to talk about in more detail. We went back to the TAV in May to receive comments. And obviously, we're here today to present the results of the survey work that we've done and seek direction from council on how to move forward. The survey itself was open from April 1st to May 9th. We did make an effort to get the survey out, both in English as well as Spanish social media. We utilized Nextdoor, local bike shops, where we actually had a QR code, you know, where if someone, you know, went, they could just use their smartphone and, you know, zap, you know, the QR code, and that would launch the survey. Our staff also tried to get a little creative. We have the Mobile Arts-Based Engagement Lab, MABEL. We actually had a fair amount of people come up to our staff when they were at that event, where we encouraged them to complete the survey as well. So in total, we received 489 responses to the survey. Eric?
So the survey that we had this spring was seven questions. And instead of asking about specific projects, we were asking more value statements for both pedestrians and cyclists within Mesa, what they would like to see from the network and from the city moving forward. I'm going to go through each one of those seven questions and hopefully just highlight, on a high level, what we think that means. So the first question that we asked was, what was most important to you as a pedestrian in Mesa? So as you're walking through the city. And I think the answer was somewhat surprising to us, and just thinking, I'll give some rationale, but the highest percentage, 49% of the respondents, said as a pedestrian, they'd like to see more off-street pathways. And the next highest, with 26%, was shade. We actually have a robust sidewalk network next of all of our streets. So that's why I think you see wider sidewalks with a lower percentage of respondents. So the next question we then asked, what was most important to you as a cyclist in Mesa? And there definitely was a shift here. And with an even response rate between more off-street pathways, and then there are some cyclists that would like to see more separated bike lanes on Mesa's streets. The third question then is, what is most beneficial to you as a pedestrian or a cyclist? And we're looking for really, what are you trying to connect to within the city? You know, are you trying to get to parks and schools? Are you trying to get to your job? Are you trying to get to shopping and retail or to transit? And the two highest categories that fell out of this is people are looking for connections to parks and recreation, and also to retail and restaurants. So how do we provide, you know, connections to our existing park system, to our existing bike network, pedestrian network, but also how do we provide connections to those active areas of the city that we have retail and restaurants? Then we got into some more specific bike infrastructure questions, just to help us, as RJ explained, bike infrastructure can range from fairly cheap fixes to really expensive. And so we first asked the question to citizens whether they felt comfortable riding on the current, on-street bike lanes that we have on our arterials. And it's not surprising to a lot of people, but close to three-quarters of them said, no, I don't feel comfortable riding next to 45 mile an hour traffic. So then we asked, what, to be able to ride on the street, what would you feel, how would you feel comfortable? Would you feel comfortable with a wider bike lane that's separated with striping? Or do you need a physical separation with a curb, whether that's like the Stadium Connector, where we built a median between traffic and bike lanes, or if we put you up on the curb with a wider pathway, like we did on Southern Avenue with the 12-foot pathway? The majority of the respondents, 61%, said, I want to be physically separated with some sort of curb, whether that's up on the sidewalk or in the street. Then we asked the question, how do you feel we can increase the amount of biking in Mesa? And this is where 61% of the respondents said that they, to increase the number and the bike use in Mesa is to build off-street facilities that connect to areas. And finally, we asked, because we know this is a major investment as we're building our active transportation network, we wanted to ask the question, quantity versus quality, for lack of better terms. But, you know, we can build more miles if we build less amenities, you know, less pedestrian nodes and trash cans and things like that. And so we asked what was more important, whether more miles and less amenities was more important, or less miles and more amenities. And three-quarters of the respondents said, we want, we just want more. They can have less amenities on them, but we want more. So from the survey questions, staff is trying to interpret what this means. And as we move forward to, you know, programming $20 million worth of projects, you know, we wanted to take some really high-level findings. And, you know, what we found and what we heard from the survey was pedestrians want more off-street pathways. And cyclists want both off-street pathways and on-street separated bike lanes. And that as we're looking forward and programming projects, we're really going to be focused on mileage and trying to use that $20 million to get more facilities than, you know, really supplementing these projects. supplementing these projects with amenities.
So the projects will, as you talked about, will, the goal is to connect into existing bike ped facilities. So, you know, for example, one project, we have a number of them, is, you know, the Mesa Gateway, where we're building that, you know, in phases. And the goal is ultimately to connect to an existing path in the town of Gilbert. Again, based on the survey results, what we're taking and that we'll focus on maximizing mileage over amenities. But try to maximize the, you know, the canals, the power lines and the freeway network that we have as just sort of natural lines, you know, to both build paths and connect to existing facilities as well as to try to connect the path system or the, even the on-street separated bike lanes to parks and retail establishments throughout the city. Schedule, based on council direction, we want to take the feedback from you on what types of projects you think we should be exploring. We would then come back to council with some ideas of potential projects to spend that $20 million. And then, based on council feedback in the following direction, we would include those projects in the next fiscal year's capital improvement program. With that, we look forward to your feedback and any questions you might have.
Thank you, gentlemen. Mr. Luna?
So RJ, as I look at the map, there's really nothing in Northeast Mesa, is that correct?
Let's go back to the map, sorry. So when you look at Northeast Mesa, there's not a lot there. You know, certainly, our goal is to use the 202, you know, as potential. Again, you know, that's probably longer term. We are moving forward right now with one project, which is the Power.
Yeah, we're calling it the Red Mountain Shared Use Path that will run along Power Road from the park and ride there at the Red Mountain 202 and Power Road, and it'll run north to the city limits.
Because we know that there's a lot of activity north, yes, you know.
Yeah, there's a lot of activity in Northeast Mesa.
With the Hoss Trail, you know, group and all that. So the mayor was involved in some conversations a while back with that group, and I've been involved in some meetings with those folks too, to try to help get folks from Mesa, you know, to there.
Yes, I've had a number of constituents that complain about the lack of bypass in Northeast Mesa, so. And as I look at this map, obviously, there's, we're not going to be dealing with that during this course.
Well, you know, one section is, if you can look at where Greenfield is on that map, and there's a dash green line, that's an RWCD canal, correct? RWCD has opened up a little bit. For years, that wasn't really an option to look at the RWCD canal system, but staff has had some initial conversation. So again, I can't say it's going to happen tomorrow.
Yeah.
But there does seem to be a change of thought that that canal might be, have potential for a future path. And that does cut through part of at least your district.
Okay, great, thank you. Mr. Thompson?
I have a friend of mine that's an avid biker, and he actually rides all the way up to Councilmember Luna's area, along Ellsworth, and then comes down through my district along Guadalupe. And his biggest complaint has always been, man, you guys gotta use street sweepers in your, in your communities to clean that bike lane curb. And so my question becomes then, if we put curbing in like the connector and so forth, how do we keep those bike lanes clean? And would it be better to, or at least less expensive to put the raised ceramic reflective bumps in versus actual curbing?
From, well, Mayor, Councilmember Thompson, from a maintenance standpoint, a lot of our, all our arterial streets are swept by a contractor. This goes back a couple of years, but we actually removed the contractor at the time because they weren't doing the job. When I'm out and about, that's stuff I look for, and if I see an area that I don't like, I call. Our current contractor is doing a much better job in general because the curb line, the bike lanes, yes, that's where the debris tends to end up. And it's very important that we maintain those bike lanes. If there's ever a specific location that there's a concern about, please let us know, and we'll check that out because, you know, that's critical. And that's how I was there. So we have, for example, along the stadium connector, we actually have a smaller sweeper that can get in between the curbs. We've learned how to install the, you know, we have bollards that prevent vehicles from getting into that separated bike lane. We've found that they're a great target, and for some reason, people do like to drive into them, whatever their condition may be in, when they do it. It tends to be at night, and in the morning, we don't always find a car, but we find the knocked-over bollard. But it's doing what it's supposed to do. So we've actually looked at a retractable bollard to make it much easier. The initial bollards we installed on the stadium connector path literally took like two people, you know, to move, so it was not easy. So we've learned some things. Yeah, that's an issue for us, but we do have a sweeper, and we're moving to buy a sweeper to cover, I'm not sure if we approved that already, but for Southeast Mesa specifically, not just to do separated, but to do the pathways in general.
So as long as the pathway is at least six feet wide, we can get the sweeper in. So that's one of the design aspects we always have to take into account.
But when you start looking at, you know, pouring concrete versus putting the pumps in, are the pumps cheaper than concrete?
Oh, certainly, they would be cheaper. You know, one, and you'll see this in the First Avenue project, there's the plastic delineators. So there's different ways, you know, to create, if nothing else, a visual separation. But, you know, the feedback from folks is, again, it's cost though, is that they would prefer something more robust. But yes, there are ways you can visually separate traffic that are far less expensive than building a separated bike lane.
Thank you. Mr. Reddy?
When you say connect to parks and retail restaurants, what does it look like? Is it better mapping as far as how people can use both bike and shared use paths or the system that we have to those locations? That's my first question. Then, second, any thoughts on how do we use better our non-artorial, but the connector streets? I'm thinking like Extension, Longmore, Horn, Lindsay, and many that connect both north and south in a much better way than maybe, there's a lot less faster traffic, though it's still fast, but there's not, the amount of cars like in main arterials where like Country Club or Alma School, Dobson in my area. But those other streets are maybe something to think about, how do we connect them in a way where we can create some of these bike paths?
So Mayor, Councilmember Reddy, I'll answer the second question first. Our staff is looking, when I mentioned the use of operational dollars, so again, the projects we're talking about potentially today are for more of the capital dollars, but we are certainly looking at those what we call half-mile streets, you know, the streets between the mile-mile arterials. Extension's a great example, where we are looking at the potential of creating a dedicated, I shouldn't say dedicated, a separated bike lane. I really do think there are opportunities in addition to what we're doing here. It doesn't all have to be on the arterial streets, to your point, we agree. So First Avenue is kind of the first project we're going to do, you know, in the downtown. But we're also looking at some east-west streets as well. You know, we've got several examples that you mentioned of north-thought streets, was it Eighth?
Eighth Avenue.
Eighth Avenue, you know, it has potential, you know, for separated bike lanes. So yes, it's not like an all or nothing, it's kind of a mix. So what we're doing is Eric's staff, who does the planning for the bike projects, is working with our operations folks. So the best time to go in and do some of this, and we have to do other street maintenance. So again, back to First Avenue, the road itself needs some work, so we're going to do some pavement maintenance and seal the road, and then go after that and go in and do the striping. So Extension, Horn, as we're working to line up, you know, our maintenance activities and see if we can create some more bike facilities. And then the first one, did you want to tackle the first question about connection?
Sure. So I think, you know, as far as connections, both into park facilities and then major retail and restaurant locations, you know, that's, obviously, we have to identify those locations first and what's important and see, you know, the first is, what do we have close? Do we have anything nearby and can we provide connections? Is there a way to provide a connection into downtown? Provide a connection to the Fiesta District along Southern Avenue that we've already done? And I think we're trying to identify those. And I think that the map, we do have a bike and ped map in Mesa. It needs to be refreshed, and I think one of the suggestions that's been given to us by both you and the public is to identify those also connection locations. So as we update the map here over the next year, that's something we'll look at doing.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I was holding off because I have a lot to say about this, and I know we've had meetings about it. Just adding to a couple of things that you just said before I go into an overall discussion, but these connector streets or these half-streets that you just had mentioned, they're just kind of resurfacing, repainting in order to create those bike lanes or paths. Do we have to bond for that? Can we do that in an easier way and put it on our maintenance?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, it's, we don't need to bond for those. I think we're talking about trying to use maintenance money, and that's why we're trying to identify locations that are high priority to us, and then we need to talk to our maintenance staff because we can't just go in and strip off the paint of the pavement and then lay down new striping, and the roadway looks horrible, people are confused by the old lines. So we do need to do some maintenance activities to provide essentially a clean slate on top of the asphalt for us to put the new striping down. So it's not, it's definitely doable, but there's more planning than just going in and restriping. So we've taken that message, we're currently working, both my staff and then the maintenance staff, to look at those projects and see what we can do over the next few years.
And a bonus effect of being able to create those wider lanes on the streets is it'll slow down traffic because one of the big complaints we get is residents who live on or near those streets complain about fast traffic, right? So we'll be able to narrow the traffic lanes or widen that, and that should also calm the traffic and provide that benefit as well. The, I had some other comment, what did you say after the connections? I can get back to it. Anyway. As far as pedestrian and biking throughout Mesa, traditionally, we've looked at it as a means of a recreational use. And completing our bike paths, you know, provides those circular things, but there are some things that need to do as far as looking at our city in the future with the priorities of safety, which I believe safety has been a huge theme throughout the presentation and the survey results, people wanting off-street just because it is safer than even a separated lane. Sustainability, as we work into our climate action plan, trying to reduce our emissions and getting into a more active transportation environment, half of our car trips are less than three miles, so can we provide those safe, attractive routes in order to reduce that impact and prepare for the future? I see downtown is hopefully an area that you can have a car-free life, that we have all the amenities and things that you need and jobs and everything like that, that you can drop your car and have those safe routes and accesses. I'm glad to see a couple. I know we can do a lot more in the downtown to have a downtown like that. And, you know, all our little hubs across the city where we have our little villages and making those walkable, bikeable areas that are safe and attractive. But also as a point of equity too, especially coming through the pandemic, we've seen, especially in our low-income areas in the southwest Mesa, that so many of the residents use public transit there. And during the pandemic, many lost their jobs, or if they didn't lose their jobs, they were hesitant to get on public transit because being in close contact with other people. So having those pathways to have alternative means, especially if you don't have a car, and rely on biking and walking as a form of transportation to get your groceries, to visit people, to get to a job, is critical. And I think we can do a lot more work in the equity thing in southwest Mesa and providing those opportunities for people who depend on active transportation as their mode of transportation. Also, in this area, we have the highest, you know, the public transit that I mentioned, and having those connections by biking and walking to the public transit that are safe, attractive, and meaningful. And also, we have the highest number of bicycle and pedestrian crashes in this area too, which is also evident of the number of people on the streets trying to get from one place to another, and crashes and deaths occur. So as this plan connects a lot of the canal paths, I'd like to see a priority of, I don't know if we're going to get any federal transportation infrastructure dollars or if we have to bond, whatever, to really look at the area and how we can serve those who depend or need to have active transportation and maybe even drop the car and live more affordably, which affordable living as rents increase and stuff is certainly a factor. An average household spends $5,000 a year on owning a car, and if you didn't have that in your equation of your budget or having to put in those extra hours that you're working just to pay for your car, that certainly allows our residents to live a better quality of life. As we found also in the pandemic, having these walkways and bicycling routes and green spaces are also critical to our mental and physical health. And it is something that all cities are looking at and to be a more modern, urban city is having those wonderful spaces to go to that are only a block away, only a few blocks away, that we don't even have to get in the car to drive to the park. So one of the things I wanted to ask about on the survey is, do we have any information as far as where the respondents lived or who responded, any demographics? Do we have a zip code or anything like that to know kind of where?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, I don't believe so. I'd have to go back to the survey detail. I don't believe we went that fine in how we collected the information, but we can verify that.
My inclination is that it's more of a recreational response. And in this mode of transportation, which we need to dedicate a lot more funding than we have, this $20 million doesn't go very far. We like to finance sprawl rather than these active transportation matters. I really think we need to work more with those communities that depend on transportation and also encouraging people who want to make that a lifestyle choice of living without a car and what kind of connections we can do. And we have a lot of work to do on that, and I look forward to working with you on that to be, you know, a modern, accessible city and protect lives and such. I'd like to also announce that I was selected, I applied for the Smart and Growth America Champions Institute, which is a six-month program, almost a year by the time we do our project of about 20 electives across the nation to study more about this active transportation and complete streets and ideas and learning from experts and learning a lot more about how we can make our cities better. So I look forward to that and working closer with you. Again, I agree with this funding, however, going forward or finding a ways, I'd like to see a lot more funding done in the equity of transportation to serve our neighborhoods, our residents that need it the most, as well as making the downtown area connections into downtown so that people can choose a car-free life, and then actually expanding it into the villages across our city so we can have those little hubs of, you know, being... city so we can have those little hubs of, you know, being, walking or biking on our less-than-three-mile trips and reducing our dependency on cars. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Mr. Freeman.
Thank you, Mayor. Lots have been said on this topic, and I was looking at District One, you know, District One has fortunately a lot of canal paths and multi-use paths in D1. You know, we extend all the way from the 101 freeway to the west of the city, all the way up and to Val Vista and Thomas that could take you out to Granite Reef Dam. And currently, we're building some multi-use paths that are really needed in the area. Some of my thoughts were that, you know, we talked, Vice Mayor talked about the narrower streets, and I, just so you know, I find it kind of a hazard for me as I drive through some of the stadium connector paths and it goes through neighborhoods. The streets are narrow, the bicyclists there come right out in the street, and when people park on their curbs, those bicyclists have to move out in the street. And you have to be very cautious when you drive some of the stadium connector path. And it's, it is a safety issue, I think, for, more for the cyclist. But the other point is, I talked to the San Harrows for SRP who deliver water on the canal paths, and having people use the canal paths, I think it's wise for us to use the non-essential side of the canal path versus the user side for the SRP trucks whenever possible. So that is a good safety mode for the user of the path, and which we currently pretty much do, and I just continue to recommend that.
On that point, Councilmember, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, SRP, as I'm sure you know, their standard is that we're on the non-operational side, you know, of the canal. The Lehigh Loop project that we're working on in your district, we can't in that case be on the other side because there's just too many conflicts. But we start with the premise as we're looking at canal projects that were on the other side of the canal from where SRP has their maintenance activities.
Yeah, and I know we're looking at extending some from the Horn and Brown area and up to the northeast there and connect down to McKellips. And the other thing I think we're really proactive on, excuse me, is the signalization for our bigger arterial streets. I think that's important to get that in today because that costs a lot of money. So in lieu of that, I know that there's some signalization and lighting on some of the canal passes, they cross certain street segments, and we need to always be, one of the things I find is sometimes the lighting is not as bright during the day as it is at night, obviously. So I know I've sent some thoughts. Can you put brighter lights that flash more in greater strength? Because during the daylight hours, the sun is a certain direction, it's hard to see that signalization. And personally, I've almost hit someone on one arterial road because they came right from the masonry fence, there was a bush, and they come right out, and it was a close call. And I had another person reach out on that saying the same thing. So it appears that from the survey, the recreational user is more weighing in, and they enjoy the open space, the pathways, because of the ambiance, and they can get to a destination. And I think, as you pointed out, the parks are an important destination for them. But then, then Councilmember Haredi, as in the Vice Mayor's comment, connection points to bring people in. I don't find many, I'm on the, I don't work out on the canal bank, but I'm around the canal bank quite a bit.
I've been with you on those canal banks, Councilmember.
And I've taken some on my Ranger down the canal bank. But there is not a lot of people using the canal pass for work. I mean, there's a few that will ride it, and I know some city employees will ride the canal path because it's convenient, and they can catch some of the major streets like Center Street and come up to work, which is great. But it's mainly the recreational users. So I just like staff to look at the signalization again across some of the canal paths. You talked about painting, and I know that there was some work done on, let's say Mesa Drive north of Brown. You did some asphalt improvement, and you did some painting there that kind of broke up the black to the green, which I think is great. So it makes people more, hey, what am I approaching here? And help them slow down. And then you brought up the point about amenities versus no amenities. I'm a proponent for less amenities and let people get where they want so we can build more paths for less dollar amounts to increase. Because I have a lot of, you know, D1 has a lot of canal paths that we're yet to improve, and we have, I know the mayor uses it quite a bit with his group and others, and there is a push for the Eastern Canal and still Con South to make these improvements. That'd be some of my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fieldsbury, you're my way in here.
I'm not one to talk just to talk, but I do just have to say, I live right off of Lindsay where our completed project is, and it's fabulous. It's really, really nice to have a paved canal, a lit canal where we can, I can go all the way from Gilbert down to North Mesa. So I love it, I appreciate it, I wish every part of the city had that. So I know we have to prioritize everything, but it really is great. And maybe just one point to the equity issue. It's interesting to see people wanting this for recreation, for exercise, or for the need to get to work, and maybe the people who need it aren't the ones who answered or responded to our survey. So I do think maybe in the future, if we're to do surveys, we incorporate where that's coming from so that we can better see what the actual needs are of the city, so.
Thank you. Yes.
I forgot to turn off my mic, but anyway, I remembered the one other question. You were talking about updating the map for the bike ped. I don't know if there's a way even in our GIS system on the website. I've had constituents ask me, I need to get, use public transit, I need to get to the rail, and I live here, and I need to bike, but I don't want to use these streets because fast traffic or whatever. And so in that mapping, can we do something as far as suggested routes and connections to at least the light rail or the most active bus stations or something like that?
Mayor, sorry, Mayor, Vice Mayor, I think, actually, you had the idea, but it triggered in my head as you started to talk about it. I think we might be able to do some work to maybe build an interactive map, you know, that people can, you know, like our, I don't want to go so far as to say it's going to be a mini Google Maps, but, you know, maybe there are some opportunities that we can use the technology that we have to try to provide some resources for folks to do some route planning.
Yes, suggested routes that are safer and more welcoming to biking.
That is something I think that's worth exploring.
Okay, thank you.
Like everyone, I have lots to say about this too, but I know that this is agendized. The reason staff is here is because they need our direction on, you know, what we have, we could easily spend our entire $100 million transportation bond on shared use paths and on bike lanes. I mean, $2 million a mile for a shared use path and twice that for a current separation. Okay, Vice Mayor, we'll just, there's a lot of probably people in cars that would like to get the streets as well. So obviously, the problem here is how do we allocate less than, less money than we would like to spend on this? And I think this was part of why this bond package passed, you know, a year or two ago is because this is a very popular item among our constituents. So my opinion is I agree with the survey results. My direction would be, let's find the most impactful way to spend this money. Let's get the most miles that we can. And, you know, once we set that policy, we're going to have to come back and say, okay, well, which neighborhoods are going to be the winners and which ones are going to be the losers? And so that'll be painful, but, but like Ms. Fieldsbury, I live in a neighborhood adjacent to some amazing paths, and I do take advantage of them, and they are getting worn out. I mean, they're very, very popular, and I've been a little bit surprised as I've been out there that it is very much a shared use path. I mean, there are absolutely a lot of recreational users out there, but I'm constantly surprised when I encounter people that obviously are using it for transportation as well. So I like the idea that maybe we figure out how to maximize the dual use, you know, but maybe we do need more Google Maps, you know, for somebody that does want to figure out, how do I take my bike safely? Now, I've had lots of friends and relatives that have been seriously injured or even killed on the streets with bikes. So I share the, that attitude as well, is that, you know, bike safety is a very serious issue, and pedestrian safety is a serious issue. So, but these shared use paths are very safe. They are, I think, even more so than a curb separated by path would be a shared use path. So my feedback is I would like to see us get the most number of miles out of this $20 million. And so I think that means that I, on the side of the survey results that say, let's do the most economical thing, which in my mind is shared use paths. So that's my two cents. I think we've all said a lot on this, and I'm not sure that as a result of that, if there's a clear consensus that's coming from this for staff.
Yeah, Mayor, I think what we're going to do is we're going to take Slide 19, the criteria that we've kind of garnered from the survey and what we've seen, and that's how, what we'll come back to next is the, if council is generally okay with that prioritization, that'll inform us when we come back with the specific list of projects. Those projects will be most likely projects that do all the things you see in this prioritization list. I think we'll be careful to include both those that are involving capital improvements as well as maybe suggesting, or also describing projects that are on, maybe being covered by the operations side where we're doing it through that. So, because sometimes this intention of this presentation was really focused on the capital side, but obviously, we've talked about a lot of other things we can do on the operations side after we've done some maintenance on streets where we can also then designate, do some, create more designated bike paths and things like that. So we could maybe bring all that together. But the, really, the priority has been when we, if you go back to the very beginning when we were developing the bond program, we talked about allocating dollars to kind of complete a lot of these projects that we've only done Phase One in prior programs. So you'll see most likely in the continuation of some of those phases. But we're trying to take advantage of the infrastructure that's in place, but also recognizing the needs for people to move around without motor vehicles. And so we're going to try to figure out how to do that on what the existing infrastructure we have. So we'll come back with the specific list of projects, and maybe that will help, you know, get a better specific vision of what we're talking about. So that's, that's kind of the plan, if that's okay with council.
Vice Mayor.
I want to add two more cents. So I was listening to a podcast this morning by an author who just wrote a book called New Mobilities, and he had created a tool of looking how to quantify the ROI on transportation and things like this. So overall, I just wanted to share some of these figures, which were outstanding to me. For on roadways and highways, we spend, and this is a national average in the United States, an average of $800 per year per capita. On sidewalks, we spend $20 to $25 per year per capita. Bike ways, $20 to $40. Transit, $100 to $200 per year. So it gives us kind of a perspective of how we use our transportation dollars on primarily cars and everything else is secondary. And as we go into the future, we're certainly seeing a shift of wanting to get away from car-centric lives and financing sprawl in order to have those amenities and abilities to live a car-free life. So just wanted to share that to, starting to shift the way we think about how we spend our transportation dollars. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. So I, I think Mr. Brady's comments are appropriate, so we'll look forward to continuing this conversation when we have some specific projects in front of us, but I hope that was useful to staff and to the, I'm glad that we're talking about this and letting the public see that they're going to get the $20 million in paths that they voted for and.
Through these federal dollars, we'll certainly bring that forward too and try to leverage that with these. But right now, this is what we know we have, and then other things may take place later, so.
I can't remember who it was that commented, that made this comment, maybe it was the Vice Mayor, that some of this, to me, to what extent can we use street dollars, you know, to improve bike lanes on streets? You know, is there some overlap at all? Is it totally forbidden that we can't improve the bike lanes while we're improving the streets?
Mayor, we can certainly use the dollars that we have for street improvements to improve bike amenities. I mean, it's not state, on street, and whether it's the local street sales tax or how we use our revenue funds, that, those, those bike facilities are part of the street.
I think if it's on the street, we probably would be reluctant to take transportation sales tax dollars and put them on a canal.
That's correct.
Does that make sense?
I get, to some extent, we've been, we've been confronted, we've presented this as an either-or.
Right.
We're either going to improve the bike transit, you know, capabilities of our streets, or we're going to use the money. But, but, so I'm encouraged here that we can use our street bond money.
I think that's what we're proposing, and we'll share some of that more.
So Mayor, as Mr. Brady commented, I actually had the same thought then when we come back to you. You know, again, this, this presentation was focused on the capital dollars, but we'll integrate what we can use our operations revenues, you know, as well. So we'll bring in for, we talked about some of those, you know, half-street or half-mile, you know, streets between the arterials, we'll bring that back as well. So while we'll look specifically for council direction on how to spend the $20 million, we'll also be able to show you the potential projects we have that we can use our regular revenues to support as well.
Perfect. Thank you very much. We've been at this for an hour and a half, if you don't mind, I think maybe we take a five-minute break and reconvene. Let's, let's start at 9:05, frankly, and we'll complete the agenda then. Good morning. I think we'd like to reconvene our council meeting. Thank you. I think we all enjoyed that, that long five-minute break that we had. But thank you very much. Next item on our agenda is to hear a presentation and provide direction on the city's proposed expenditure plan for the coronavirus recovery funds.
Mayor, councilmembers, thank you. It's great to be here with you. My name is Mike Kittington, Deputy City Manager. With me to my right is Irma Ashworth, Finance Director here at the City of Mesa. Today, we'd like to present an update on the American Rescue Plan Act or ARPA, and in particular, the local fiscal recovery fund. And the first couple of slides will be a review of the presentation we gave in May to you guys about this ARPA. And just as a reminder, the ARPA is a larger $1.9 trillion bill that was signed by the President in March of this year. In, in May, we received the interim final ruling or the IFR for this fiscal, the local fiscal recovery funds. The Treasury allowed comments and questions to be given through July 16th. That's coming past, and we haven't received a final ruling yet. As far as I know, they've said, what I've heard, what I've been told is that they're looking at and reviewing all the comments and questions, and hopefully soon we'll receive the final ruling. Now, what they told me is there's not, there's going to be more clarification and changes. So the IFR we have today is really what it's going to be, but there's just going to be some more clarification added, if anything, when we do receive the final ruling. So the next, so the City of Mesa was, we were, as you may recall, we were allocated $106 million. We've received half of that in May of this year, and we're expecting to receive the next half for the remaining half in May of 2022 of next year. We have until 2020, the end of 2024 to obligate those funds, so that gives us a little bit more than three years, and we need to get the cash out the door by the end of 2026. So that's the timeline. The next slide is the eligible uses, and I don't want to review these, we talked about these, but in general, the common theme around here, what Treasury really wants to, has emphasized, is using these funds to respond to those that have been impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. They provided a lot of examples, but not an all-inclusive list. And so really, what we've focused on is helping those that have been impacted, whether it's small businesses, community members, employees, helping those that have been impacted negatively by the COVID-19 pandemic. One other thing I wanted to mention here quickly before we start to introduce our plan is talking about qualified census tracts, and you'll see that as a common theme throughout our programs or plans or proposed. And what it is, is it's a lower-income neighborhood that's described as such by the federal government. It's, the technical definition is 50% or more of the households have 60% or less of the area median gross income. And the qualified census tract, the Treasury and the IFR allows us to assume that everybody in the qualified census tract has been negatively impacted by COVID-19, the pandemic. So that, it gives us a little bit more flexibility when we use those, these dollars in a QCT. So the update, we took council's feedback that we received in May, and staff around the city provided the city manager's office project and program ideas. Irma and I took those ideas and reviewed them to make sure they were, to see whether or not they were consistent with the eligible uses, in our opinion, from the IFR. Some were consistent, some weren't. Today, we'd like to present this allocation plan to council. Currently, the programs or plans, we have 14 of them, we have in this Currently, the programs or plans, we have 14 of them, we have in this plan. We also have an unallocated bucket, recognizing there's going to be need in the future for other community needs that are, that aren't in the programs that we have listed in our, our initial plan. And also wanted to remind you, these plans, these programs are in an initial stage. We still need to spend more staff time on many of them to develop them fully. And when we do that, we'll come back to council. The goal of today's meeting is really to get council's feedback and direction on whether you want us to move forward with these programs and plans. We've also included estimates. These are high-level estimates, and they're most likely going to change, you know, in the next couple of months. And so that's kind of how we want to set up here. We also have, wanted to remind you, we have a detailed summary of these projects in the back of the council report. Today, I'm going to give a sentence or two about each one of these programs or plans. We've also invited the program leads and the department leads here today to answer any detailed question that you may have that I may not be able to answer, which I'm sure there are a lot of them. And also, so finally, we were able to take these 14 projects or programs and classify, or group them into four categories. The categories here we had, you see are public health, negative economic impact, services to disproportionately impacted communities, and premium pay. And we didn't just come up with these category names. These are actually the category names required by this, the ARPA, in this IFR, for reporting purposes. So these are the reporting categories that they've given us, that these programs have to fall into when Irma provides those quarterly reports to the Treasury. And so that's how we've grouped them. So the first, the first category is public health. And as you can see here, we have four projects, including public safety, which is a part of this public health category. The PD Real-Time Crime Center, as you know, the police department is, is developing a real-time crime center. This crime center will serve as a law enforcement technology center to help more efficiently, effectively provide policing services to the community. This investment would provide the technology and hardware, software and hardware to this crime center, including a mapping technology, the video wall integration, and so on and so forth. The behavioral health, this is for Mesa Fire Medical in particular, or specifically, they're committed to provide the behavioral services to our community. And this would be three years of contracted service with behavioral health clinicians that are able to respond to the crisis. Number three, we have ambulances. Today, Mesa Fire Medical has 12 operating ambulances that are in, in operation today, daily. Since the beginning of the pandemic, we've had to provide a more thorough decontamination process for the ambulances that have transported potentially COVID-19 patients. And this decontamination process can take anywhere from 30 minutes to an hour. When that happens, we have to take these units out of service, and these crews are, are waiting for that decontamination process to complete. So this investment would be able to purchase five, five units, five ambulance units, to take those crews whenever their units are being decontaminated, so that we can maintain the, the level of service on a consistent basis. And finally, the fourth item here is a PD body scanner and thermal reader. This would be for the holding facility and would provide a contactless temperature reading, a real-time temperature reading, and also a scanner to help mitigate the COVID, the spread of the COVID-19, and also to, also to, for security as well. Do you have any questions?
Mr. Freeman has a question. Mike, when you're talking about deconning ambulances, so are you buying additional ambulances? So if that ambulance needs to be deconbed, that goes out of service, then the other one comes back into play and the ambulance crew goes back into service?
Exactly. That's right.
I see.
That's correct.
Chief Hayes nodding her head, yes. Thanks, chiefs.
Ultimately, ultimately, with time, our goal too is to be able to deploy more, total of more ambulances in the whole system, not just as backup, but eventually with staffing, with increasing staffing to support this, we'll be, it won't be just a backup. It could be then, we could be implementing it into the system, if that makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Puts more ambulances in service. The other question I had when we, of course, we're talking about ambulances. I'm thinking about fire trucks, engine or ladder companies that need to be deconned. Does this fall in the same area to where if a crew is in a hazardous or contaminated situation, they get in, does that, can we fall back on getting an additional engine company? Or do we have one ready to go, chiefs, or?
You're just talking about the crew.
I'm talking about the ambulance, the engine or ladder company that needs to be taken out of service to be deconned, then that crew is sitting there, similar to what you're describing with the ambulance company. I don't know if we can parlay that into that discussion or not.
Buy more, another pumper?
Yeah, let's buy another fire truck.
Yeah, Mayor, I think we're running, I think we're going to be.
It's only one point, what?
Pushing outside the bounds. I think this helps us, ambulance health, public safety fits inside the COVID. I think we go outside of the health response. I, I don't know that we're going to be, the things are very careful about looking at as supplanting, you know, something that, I think that link would be difficult.
I don't, other agencies in the valley have to take their trucks out of service.
No, no, I'm saying about buying a pumper, though, with these dollars.
We have reserve trucks, I'm sure, that are very careful.
Yeah, yeah, no, I was just speaking to the dollar amount.
Yeah. Sorry, I don't want to go on a tangent.
Mr. Lorna, then Mr. Reddy.
Just really quick, the PD Real-Time Crime Center, is that, and you said you're a wall where we can see where crime is happening in the city. Is that going to, you're going to put that in which facility? Are we looking at central or?
Yeah, where are you now on this one? We've moved around a few times.
Councilmember Reddy, council, the Real-Time Crime Center, Councilmember Luna, sorry. The Real-Time Crime Center will be initially, we thought we would locate it in the headquarters, but with the remodel project coming for the headquarters building, we've identified some vacant space at our municipal court, where it will be located interim, and ultimately will end up at the MCH location, our old municipal court building next to our headquarters building on the second floor there. That will occur down the road after our full headquarters remodel is completed.
So Mayor and council, I invite you to look at your city manager's update today. What you're going to see is that, this is, this is going to get to the point, but we have to move our family advocacy group out of their location to do major remodeling. So we're moving part of them into the second floor of what used to be, well, it used to be the city prosecutor's office over at Mesa Center for Higher Education. So that'll be finished out for them. When they leave, then the idea, well, and in the, in between that, the Real-Time Crime Center will be, there's empty space over at the current municipal court building today.
The downtown one?
Yes. There's an empty, I can't remember what it was intended for, I almost forget.
It was originally intended to be a, a holding facility for inmates as they came there for court.
We decided that wasn't going to work. So it's sitting there, unused space. So we'll move the Real-Time Crime Center over there, starting up. We're, but, so that's one point. Mesa Family Advocacy Center gets go to the second floor of Mesa Center for Higher Education. When their building's renovated, they'll go back. But now that we've spent the money renovating that facility, then Real-Time Crime Center is the idea, is they move into that second floor. Which puts them a lot closer to, you know, PD headquarters at the time.
So I would imagine it's going to be a facility like an EMS center, where you have a video wall with monitors and computers.
Correct. We'll have consoles that are similar to our, our dispatchers and the consoles that they use. We'll have video wall capability. It'd be very high-tech, great equipment that's already being identified and is starting into the procurement process.
And we have staffing to ensure that what's, that's operational.
That's currently in the plans, and we're working out the details of that. We're in the process of identifying the staff that will go into the Real-Time Crime Center.
And it's been a discussion in their budget process too. Not only the equipment, technology that's standing up, but the staffing level part of that too, so.
And that'll, you'll, this is something in the, in the works, so it'll take a couple of years before we build this up, because we have till 2024, 2026.
Our plan is to be operational with the Real-Time Crime Center in some form by mid-December.
This December?
Correct, yeah. When we will be able to be in the new court building with the full setup of the Real-Time Crime Center, we're still working on that timeline, probably early to mid-next year. But we, our goal is to, as soon as we get the technology, the equipment and software to get operational, we're going to get it up and running.
Perhaps you might want to make a presentation to the Public Safety Committee, Mr. Pombier, so that we can see what a model might look like.
Certainly.
So give us the opportunity to evaluate that, that would be great. And so the other question had to do with the behavioral health, and I'm not sure if this is with you or with Mary.
It's Mary.
It's, it's different than what we're doing with PD, right? Okay, maybe Mary can speak to that. The 2, 25, 2,500? Because it said to respond to increased violence, so I would imagine that, is that part of the, your behavioral health?
Mayor, Councilmember Luna, members of the council. Yes, this is the, kind of the program we're doing today. We're looking at doing 24/7 and have the two crisis counselors on a unit that respond when the crews need it, or PD as well, too.
Is that enough, is that enough people?
Yes, because it's, it's two on the truck, and it'll be on, they'll have like shift work.
Oh, okay.
Yes, so it'll be.
But Mary, backup. This was, this is, this is not new necessarily.
Oh, correct. This is, this is similar.
So this is a program we've had in place.
Correct.
But the grant, so why don't you explain that part?
Yeah, so, so the, the partners that we were using in this, their funding was reduced. So we've been covering the cost in the meantime for the gap here. And so we're hoping to use these dollars to continue that program. It just increases the hours in operation.
Okay, okay, great. And then, and then the other question was the body scanners and thermal readers, is that you, or is that?
That's PD.
That's PD.
Sorry.
I'll try and answer.
We should have organized these.
Thank you.
Maybe before Mary leaves. Mary, I'm sorry, that, we, we had a great presentation a month or two ago about the new paradigm, and you know, we're going to preage, and is this part of that or something different?
Yeah, how does this, you know, PD has the contract with Solari. Solari, sorry. And how does that merge with what we're doing here? John, do you want to take that?
Mayor, council, this is, this program that we're currently doing, we've been doing for quite some time, will filter into the new program that we're starting out. It will become an asset within that program, but it's a different type of response. This is not readily available. Mary, if I recall correctly, it averages about two calls a day, correct?
Currently, yeah, two and a half, and right now we get about four call-outs.
Right. So our need is much greater than what this unit can do. So we're looking at expanding our response model as we discussed. This will be one factor within it, but it will be a, probably, hopefully, in the end, a very small part of the overall response.
Okay, great. And then this body scanner?
I'll tell you.
I apologize, I ordered them in dollar amount.
I'm the cheapest.
Leave it to you. Bean counter.
Mayor, council, Councilmember Luna, the body scanner will provide more coverage in the jail for, right now, we pat down people, we do head thermal scanners to see their temperatures. This, this will provide a accurate read of people who come in on their temperature read. And also, we can see past the clothing, if there's, if they're hiding any kind of drugs, weapons, that kind of stuff, or even inside their body, so we can prevent overdoses in the jail, too.
Okay, so this will be down here at.
In the holding facility, yeah.
In the holding facility.
Yep.
Okay, yeah. All right, those are my questions, thank you.
Can, can you sell me a little bit more on the body scanner? Because to me, it seems like this is a really expensive thermometer. You know, it, so we're all used to going into restaurants and other places now, and as you walk in, there's a red dot on your forehead, and they say, yes, right this way. And I, I bet that doesn't cost $160,000.
Yeah, the thermal reader part of it is just, just that. The body scan technology actually sees past the clothing and into a person's, you know, if they're, if they're concealing something internally, like drugs, which happens often, and we try to prevent overdoses.
Okay.
So Mayor, in the program, that, when the president released this, one of the things that he included at the very end is because of a lot of cities were, have, and we are one, experiencing a surge in violence and criminal activity during COVID. And so they allowed for, kind of mentioned specifically, the need to support and address public safety concerns. So some could potentially theoretically hire new officers. But the challenge there is one-time money, so you hire them for a couple of years, and eventually you have to pick up the cost. But there were a lot of cities that were asking for more flexibility to use it for public safety purposes. So as we sat down with public safety to say, okay, we think this would be an opportunity, what are some one-time purchases that wouldn't normally make it in our general fund discussion that we could fund with these dollars? And that's where you get the Real-Time Crime Center and this body scanner thermal reader. Just to, again, wow, we, we, the detention center is an area where it's very closed quarters. There's a staffing, we continue to have lots of challenges with individuals that come in there, not knowing a whole lot about them, and having officers, detention officers having to get too close in proximity. And it's kind of, it's a safety issue. It's a big dollar amount, that's true, Mayor. But at the same time, we think it provides a tremendous amount of increased safety for our detention officers, because, and just gives them more information about the individuals coming into that facility.
I, I support it, but I'm just saying that, I mean, if we, if we avoid one death, you know, because we are better informed as to what, what we're dealing with when somebody checks into our jail, I mean, probably just the liability savings there is, would, would cover this. But I think we just, on its surface, I mean, we, you need a little paragraph. You can't just say $160,000 for.
Sure, and that's why I would invite the council, as we go through this, she may want to go to your council backup, because there's a lot more detail there.
I have it pulled up.
Good, thank you, Julie.
Great, thank you. Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Reddy.
Quick on, on this topic, public health. I'm not sure how do we, we work on like vaccine deployment on like flu? Is that a program that we, we prop up internally? You know, I've been with the fire folks that have gone throughout the, the city with, at the public schools and other locations and giving out flu shots. So is there a chance to, and who knows if we need a, like a booster shot for COVID in the future, or, you know, those, those items? Is there a chance to integrate additional costs for those types of public health?
We're going to get there at the end, where we've, we've set aside just kind of a contingency for COVID vaccinations. It doesn't really speak to anything beyond COVID.
Okay.
And usually, we get grants and other supplements for the flu. But to your point, not knowing.
Sure.
Boosters or, or assisting the school district with children. We've, you'll see at the very end, we kind of labeled, there's a list of what, five or six items that are kind of setting aside for, we don't know exactly, but they're kind of a contingency, and that's one of them.
Okay.
Mayor, I, I will add to what Mr. Brady said and Mr. Reddy, that the, the flu vaccinations that the fire department has come, become an annual event for Mary and her team to put out, will be funded again by Indian Gaming money, by our 12% dollars that we receive from Salt River Pima. That's something that you'll be seeing on a future agenda as we accept those funds. But that has been a great partnership between the city and the Salt River Pima Maricopa Indian community for numerous years that helped provide the funding that Mary and her staff need for those vaccinations.
Okay. I wasn't sure if we use a, a lot of male funds already.
Problem I have for flu, but we're certainly holding on to dollars for COVID, because we think throughout the, the period that these funds we can spend, we just anticipate there's going to be something we're probably going to need to use.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, the next category is the negative economic impact category. And the first, the first item up there is the energy commodity cost. As council may remember, Frank and his team presented to council the extreme shift in energy costs that the City of Mesa has been experiencing over the last year. Typically, that commodity cost gets passed through to the customer directly. And this proposal would be able to offset that cost for the, the customers in the electric or the energy area. And the majority of that is in a QCT, so which would help it qualify for this, the ARPA, and under the IFR, the interim final ruling.
Those are our electric utility customers. Typically, that pass-through, the energy cost on, well, years before was around $10, $11 million. Tony, am I about right? This past year, it's spiking to about $32 million. And remember, that was during COVID. It was during the time that there were significant weather-related disruptions that took place in parts of the country that created those spikes. What we're recommending to council, and we think this would help, because we talked about how are we going to recover those costs? You know, we can't, the bills come, we've got to figure out. Normally, we would just pass these costs directly to the customer. You know, electric utility fits right inside of one of these qualified census tracts, lower income predominantly. So what we're recommending, this seems to fit very well with the eligible funding, is to take not the total amount, I mean, we're still going to pass on the typical $10, $12 million of energy costs, but it's that extraordinary difference, that $20 million. And what we would propose, if council would agree, is that we would essentially just credit each utility account with, you know, what they would otherwise have to pay, we would credit it with these dollars, and we would pay it. So one, it takes the burden off of the residents. Two, it obviously helps our own electric utility be able to stay, you know, puts $20 million back in their utility fund. So that's the concept that we are, would like to recommend to the council. So that's the concept that we are would like to recommend to the council.
Okay, the second item here is the food distribution center. And this, as you may recall at the beginning of the pandemic, our partners, United Food Bank, was overwhelmed with the demand in their Havelina Center. And they partnered with the city of Mesa to create kind of a drive-through style food distribution program at the convention center. Now, what this would do would be able to purchase a permanent location for United Food Bank to be able to service those who are experiencing food insecurity in our community. And this number is most likely, already we know that that's most likely is going to change, be lower than 10 million.
It's too high. It's probably twice as high as it needs to be.
So this is another example of these numbers are very high-level estimates, most likely to change. Yes.
Mr. Luna.
Oh, I'm sorry. I forgot to turn my mic off. Anyway. So are you looking at identifying and buying a building? Is that what we're looking at?
That's correct.
And is it not not in Havelina, but some other location more centralized that community can come and get food if we go through another situation?
I think the best we we need to be careful because they are having discussions.
Right.
They've already started looking at locations that are not in our kind of our downtown area, but they're in other areas of the city. They've just this recent has they've just come up with some recent opportunities and they're meeting literally tomorrow. And so what we've just told them is the food bank and the city's partnership was incredible. There was a lot of work that was done. They've run out of space. They need to expand in order to either. And they've come with a new model of service. And so they've all that has done been in place. We would just like to set aside probably about five, half of this, about half million, or sorry, 5 million, and be a partner to help support the capital allocation. And they they would do all the tenant improvements and they would operate it for the purposes of expanding their services.
Yeah, because the Havelina location is very difficult to get into.
Yes.
So if if we can identify a place that's a little bit more accessible or vehicles can be drive through, it'd certainly be something that I would certainly support.
And so we would still own the building that they would use or they're going to keep the building?
Well, under this program, we would acquire the property and lease it back to them.
And lease it to them.
With the restrictions that it would have to continue to be used, you know, these these types of services.
So I'm actually new on the United Food Bank board as of tomorrow. So I will probably find out the answer to this question tomorrow. But I know there was a little bit of pushback this summer or last summer just that anyone could drive up and get food.
Right.
And so I do know if that is that part of the model that's changing?
Yes, very, yeah. And the mayor and I were briefed on it yesterday.
Okay.
It's a very different model than the lines of cars we saw where people pull up and we just put food that they they're trying to get away from.
With like no accountability, so they'll keep track of who's actually getting the food.
Well, it's not only the accountability, but it's to provide support services. So it's more than just providing food. It's also like, how do we connect you with other services?
Yeah, because I know I've I've been to seminars and and conferences where the last thing you want to do is just give people food. And when you're in an emergency situation, that was great, but yeah.
I think you'll find out that that's that they're going. I think the mayor has a book for you to read.
Yeah.
That's right, Mayor.
I was very encouraged when I heard this, the new model being presented, you know, the the classic model, which we all, I thought I was just so proud of our city and our food bank when we saw the long lines of cars and, you know, you pump your brakes and two seconds later, you got 50 pounds of food in your trunk. That I'm that was wonderful, but that's not the the best model to follow. So, yeah, I think this this money provides an opportunity for us to work with the food bank to to figure out, to do a better job of that.
The third item on this in this category is the downtown district revitalization. So Treasury, since they issued their IFR, has also provided FAQs for further clarification. And in one of the FAQs, they really emphasized the outdoor space to prevent the spread, to mitigate the spread of the COVID-19. And they brought examples of assisting small businesses that have been negatively impacted by helping them with their restaurant patios, the facade improvements. They they addressed those specifically. And so this this program or project would include those type of projects within downtown Mesa, which again falls within a QCT. So we'd be able, it's an easier allowability eligibility. The fourth item here is Wi-Fi and mobile broadband. And I know Travis has come to the council last week and spoke a little bit about this. It's providing that connectivity to the lower-income families. And again, downtown here, we're in we're in a qualified census tract.
Well, this is one also where we talked about using the schools as a location and creating a node that then goes out from there. So we're trying to prove up the technology the with a vendor. And so as soon as we kind of get in position, we hope that we'll be able to establish nodes at the schools in the west side and then out from there. I think it's a mile or two miles that they can also, and it'd be free connection. So that but we'll come back. We're still proving that we've working with a vendor. We hope to be able to prove that up.
Thank you. The fifth item here is the Mesa Small Business Learning Lab. This investment would be into the studios, renovating the second floor here for to create a physical space for those small businesses to come to access resources, learning, class coaching, coaching, and a place to provide to to network with other entrepreneurs as well. Within that funding is also training, workforce training as well for those entrepreneurs. Number six here is the convention center floor replacement. Now, this is what we learned, this is what we discussed earlier, the partnership with United Food Bank. At the end of that year-long program, we realized that the flooring needed to be replaced in the main hall due to that, the food distribution program. And this is another.
We were going to build Dave Richens for this, but we thought this would be a better one.
And so that's that one.
Okay, the third. Just to that point, is it going to be replaced with carpeting?
No, no, this is that exhibit hall area that I don't know if it's epoxy or what is it, Andrea, that we need a that floor? What is it? What is that?
It's not carpet.
Prep area.
Yeah.
Oh, is this the this is not the floor area?
No. Go ahead.
That's all. It is carpet. It's a type of carpet product that's very low in pile, so it's easy to clean. And it's in squares, so we can replace sections of it. But and it will also dampen the noise in there, which will help with the echoing when we have bigger events. But yes, it is a carpet product.
Oh, it is, really?
That's I think that'll make for a nicer convention. I mean, we'll be able to have events.
It just needs to be, it got pretty torn up, pretty abused.
Torn up, marked up, stained. We needed to do something and we experimented with a few different types of treatment to leave the concrete there, restaining it, grinding it down. And all of those test patches didn't result in a very nice-looking product. So that's why we thought, let's go with a carpet product instead.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Billingsburg.
On the Small Business Learning Lab, is there already a place that you're thinking of putting that?
Yeah, the second floor of the studios.
Oh, is that where they're?
Yeah, this investment.
So we're building the first floor is where our partnership with ASU is.
Okay.
And then we would have Jay and Economic Development continuing the programs that were so successful in supporting small business, kind of creating a physical space for them, building out more of the second floor of the studios.
That really beautiful area with all those windows?
Yes.
Can we still have dances up there? Okay.
Sure. So that's the plan is to use this funding to help.
Build up that.
The current scope of project is just kind of is not to complete out that second floor because we didn't have the program.
Right.
But then we're thinking, we really need to have a place to kind of locate a physical space for small business. And like, okay, let's that seems like a great idea. So we're gonna, it's just to continue, finish out what we're not doing in phase one for the second floor. So we can move a small business assistance programs into that space.
Okay.
The first item in this category, the services to disproportionately impacted communities, is the homeless solution. This would consist of both local programs and regional programs. And really, the focus of this investment would create these long-term sustainable facility and programs to assist those that are experiencing homelessness in our community. And we'll come back to you, Natalie and her team will come back to you with more on this in the in the next couple of weeks or months. Number two here, and number two and three are both recreational programming for K through six and education enrichment scholarship. These are these are both for children in the Mesa School District or Mesa students. And the education enrichment scholarships would be to our local museums. And the recreational programming would be for those recreational centers that we have next to QCT schools in QCT or Title I schools as well. So I'm focused on the lower income. And this would be a two-year program, both of these, number two and three.
So the program really speaks to the concern about children and their impact during COVID and the impact of their education and allowing for programs to enrich that education going forward, especially in those lower-income areas that might have been most affected. We kind of have some of these programs today, but we thought this would be a great opportunity where schools may be a challenge for them to kind of start up these programs or they come to our IDM Museum or the Natural History Museum. So essentially, we're going to provide the scholarship that allows them to come in to these facilities. And we're essentially paying for them to come back to our facilities. And then the same thing for the recreational centers. So it's trying to do an outreach to that part of our community, to the children specifically, and addressing that issue of kind of re-engaging them back into our facilities.
So would this be individuals are applying to these scholarships or teachers for their class or schools?
I think normally, can you help me out? Is this usually done through the schools, Mark, or how does that? How is that done?
Mark, isn't it Todd Wallace? Would it be?
No, no, Mayor, council, a little bit different. So for the education enrichment scholarships at the museums and the arts center, those would be the individual schools would be applying. For the recreational programming, the K through six, the three recreation centers, Webster, Jefferson, and the Eagles Community Center are already located in QCTs. So we would offer individual scholarships for the programs that we offer at those facilities.
So it could be individuals just come up and we get the information. They could just come up and enroll on their own.
I'm sorry, Mayor. Thank you.
Qualified census tract. So it just means a, sorry, well, you just hear that, but it's it. And I think Mike explained before that what's key about that terminology is that it kind of says, as long as if you're directing services inside that qualified census tract, think of it almost like we talked about CDVG eligible areas, kind of that kind of discussion, then it really kind of washes away a lot of the criterias. Like if you're providing services inside of this area, we know you're meeting the needs of the lower-income impacted COVID-impacted communities. And so it really gives us a lot more flexibility in the types of programs. So you can see a lot of these programs are kind of directing to especially in this case, the children in those qualified. That's why Mark's saying, listen, we've already got most of our recreation centers fall into this area. So the individuals who are coming and signing up for those programs, if they live inside that area, as long as they live inside the area, we don't do it, we don't have to do a income check. They're qualified and it makes it very easy for us for Irma when she has to just, because we have to justify all this back to Treasury. Does that help? Yeah.
So that question, is there any way to expand it to include Mesa K-ready? Because they're obviously not in kindergarten yet. And they, I'm sure they they qualify because they're going to be low-income children.
So this would be, is that I'm not sure.
Mesa K-ready or pre-K.
So.
For example, part of that is, you know, enrichment programs at the libraries.
At the IDM.
So maybe we could cover some of the museum, you know, tuition for.
Sure. The K-ready program.
Oh, you're because you're thinking, well, for the recreation programs in the rec centers, it's it's anybody who comes up to sign up for those programs that meets it.
But you did, yeah. But you did mention that the IDM Museum.
No, okay, that's different. So let's go with, okay, so let's start, Mark, hold on quickly. So do we, in the recreation centers, we put K through six, but we could do if we have pre-K activities in our recreation centers?
We typically offer have a lot of pre-K programs at those facilities because they're overtaken by the summer camps.
Okay.
But for.
But now, so if the question is like, how do we get pre-K into the IDM?
ID Museum.
Okay, so let's ask that. That's a good, that's a different question, so.
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Luna. Mesa K-ready could be something that we look at and we can kind of study that a little bit further. But what I also know is that in partnership with the with Mesa Public Schools, which is the lead on that program right now, they're also putting dollars toward that program because they've received federal dollars and are doing that because it's going to help strengthen the whole continuum for them and particularly for that level of of children and families. So I'll definitely take a look at it, but it may not be necessary.
If someone is a pre-K.
So I'm thinking about the ID Museum.
Or pre-K age and they come to our museums, or we could advertise that we can make those services or make those admissions available to. Let us work on that. That I don't think we thought, we thought, you know, we have an existing program with a school, we just kind of worked through that.
Right, and that makes sense.
But if we need to say, well, wait a minute, if we have someone who brings a toddler, which, you know, ID Museum, we get a lot of those before, then maybe we could figure out a way to make those scholarships available for those children also.
Okay. Thank you for that direction.
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Freeman.
Just one more question. Does this apply to charter schools in the city, a Mesa or only?
Well, they, again, it has to fit inside of the, that's why we're using, we we work with qualified census tract.
Or Title I, right? It says Title I.
Yes, yes. So I don't know if charter, I don't know enough about whether charter schools would.
I just wondered if their programming, they would be eligible for these programs.
The theory here is that these programs are really directed to those that are living inside of this qualified census tract area. That's who.
And some of their students may be that way.
Yeah, and that's what I don't know. I think we would just kind of generally say, we're trying to use existing programs to address that group, that population. But if they're outside of the Mesa Public School system or let us figure out a way to be all-inclusive.
That's where I'm at.
Anybody inside those qualified census tracts that we could accommodate. Yeah, we can figure that out.
Okay, thanks.
If you don't mind, I back to the homeless solution, I just want to make a comment that I there have been, we've all been talking about, wouldn't it be great to have a more regional approach to providing, addressing the homeless problem? And I have had a great opportunity to talk with Mayor Ortega from Scottsdale and Mayor Woods from Tempe recently. They are supportive of pursuing more regional solutions, including perhaps a facility that would have some regional participation and and financial support. So I think that this this $20 or $20 million figure, there's that is to be decided, determined exactly how that shakes out. And I just want, there are discussions taking place at Scottsdale City Council meetings and Tempe City Council meetings where they're saying, oh, we're talking to Mesa. So I don't want people to to think that, I mean, I also want people to know that there's those discussions are taking place and we'll flesh out ideas and it's to be determined where those money goes.
And Mayor, the 20 million is both for intended to at least placehold as Natalie comes up with some ideas, both regionally, addressing regional partnerships, as well as working with nonprofits locally to come up with some solutions. So it's 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 kind of all of those together. So we don't, we just didn't know how to portion that, or we didn't portion those out one way or the other. But here's that, this is a recommended thought, we start from here, so.
Okay, then the final category that we would like to present to council today is premium pay. This is one of the allowable uses that the IFR mentioned for those essential city workers that continue to provide essential services to the community throughout the pandemic and had to put their own health at risk. And so this is what we've allocated at 12.8. And this would include the funding for those, the one-time payment that Mr. Brady has announced for those critical and essential workers within the city of Mesa.
So back in the budget, or I guess, I think I talked about this in the budget time, when we talked about providing a $2,000 bonus for employees in January. So the portion that would be covered, this would cover the portion of public safety and essential employees. And they would receive the funding through this program. And then the rest of the employees, because I don't like calling who's essential and who's not as far as, because I always tell Irma, her folks that do the payroll, they're pretty essential. And so we, you know, the audit ones, so so so, but the, no. But I mean, it's it's hard to draw the line. So what the idea is, we would cover the cost for the essential employees, public safety and many of our public works folks with these funds. And then the general fund picks up the rest. So all employees will be getting the $2,000. But this portion is covering the public safety and essential workers.
And finally, as Mr. Brady alluded to earlier, there's an unallocated funding amount of just over 14 million. And we have a list of ideas that we received recently or just started to look at. So the Councilmember Heredia, there's the COVID-19 vaccination idea and list as well, on the list as well.
So like the, for example, the building for food that you're saying that would be less than what you have on here. So since those are general numbers, this number actually would probably be bigger.
Yeah.
Or less to pay them. What is that actually?
And some of those, even all the ones we showed you, they they could move a little bit. It's the ones that are the smaller dollar amounts are probably more precise because it's a very more specific item, like a body scanner. I know what that is. But these, what we're saying that we didn't allocate all the dollars, but we also have several projects listed here that we're still thinking about or recognizing, they, you know, COVID vaccines in the night in the future. That may be something we need to hold on to and just make sure we've got the funding for that.
So are you kind of waiting for these?
Yeah, we're working on these, but we weren't ready to tell. Yeah, we're working on these, but we weren't ready to tell, break them out until you specifically how much they were gonna be. We just weren't, cybersecurity, I think we've got, that one's getting really close. We could probably come up with a number on that one pretty soon, but anyway, that's what we're at.
Mr. Haredi.
On going back to the education, recreation program, is that, that, those amounts based on just the need that we have, that students come into those locations?
It's prior year experiences is what we did, yeah. Because we recognize those were, you know, we've had these relationships in the past. And so we were trying, how do we restart those and make those available again?
Okay, I, it just seems like maybe a little too low, or I don't know if we, we market to others, like our affordable housing, children that we work with and, you know, various nonprofits work with, other proactive measures that we can assist them attend, you know, our museums and our recreation programs. I know during the summer last year, there was a lot of, lot of neat programming that Parks and Rec did around bags and other programs that allowed, but they, they ran out of supplies, right? Or they ran out of capacity. So if we can look at maybe, if there's an additional need that we can increase.
I don't think that'll be a problem, we can make those adjustments, yeah.
And then on the, there is also a program where we work with small business restaurants, where I think the pandemic taught us a lesson of just the food insecurity, not only the food box, but the program that, you know, hot meals that were delivered to some of these nursing centers, hospitals. I think that was a best practice program across the country that I think we were one of the biggest or one of the first ones. I know a couple of other cities did expand on that. But looking at those types of options as well, if, if, you know, helping small restaurant, small business restaurants here Mesa, in addition to providing some food, not at the scale that we probably did back then, but looking at those opportunities, options that we can
Sure.
work with our community.
You know, Mayor Councilman Haredi, that on the, that kind of potential uses, that what we had thought about is kind of shifting our support for restaurants, creating this kind of, the concept is, and Mr. McVeigh's kind of leading this, is this restaurant incubator program, where you could kind of bring in small business restaurants and really run them kind of almost through a boot camp or an incubator to get the skills up and have them, almost literally have like a restaurant space and let, and work with them about, you know, their business plan and how to run the business. So that's kind of what this concept is trying to lead to. It's more of a, how do we build the sustainability and resiliency into some of these businesses?
Is that with the option maybe of creating a commercial kitchen where these small businesses can learn?
Yes.
Is something that we can look into?
That's our dream, we're still trying to figure, and want to do it in the downtown and they come in and out, you know, over a period of time and have a storefront. We have all these dreams, we're still trying to figure, but yes, that's, that's kind of where we're.
Where we can rent maybe, I know, I think LA, downtown LA has the city, like a commercial kitchen where they train and incubate small businesses there and furthering those options for people to learn and grow their businesses.
Yeah, yeah, I think you're singing our songs. Jeff, anything you want to add to that?
Mayor, Councilmember Haredi, you're describing exactly how we are envisioning it. The idea would be that we would be able to buy a space, build out that space with a commercial kitchen, shared kitchen, shared commissary. We'd have a program partner such as a Local First Arizona, who currently runs Little Fairs Kitchen over at El Rancho, which is essentially a place that people that want to start a food business, whether it be catering or food truck, go and they learn the business side of it, as well as then able to rent the time there in order to, to produce their food. But the timeframes that they have are so limited that they can't actually have a retail space themselves. So they have to go out into the park, into the public separately. This would create a spot where they could then grow their business with a retail space. There would be a graduation period attached to it. So let's say after eighteen months, you would graduate and the expectation is we're growing our own here, that then they would find a new space within the city and become their own standalone restaurant.
Perfect.
Great, yeah, and the food incubator, the restaurant incubator, the commercial kitchen, I would just like to know more about the utilization of the one at El Rancho, just so we're not duplicating something that we, a great idea that we already did once.
No, we don't want to, yeah, yeah.
And Mayor, to that point, this is actually, if you can think about it, it's almost a continuum of their, of their care. So if you start your food business, learn a lot of El Rancho, you could be one of the first program participants to have a more permanent brick and mortar space within the incubator where you then grow the actual retail side of it. So hopefully, we think they're gonna be very complimentary.
But we've got to find a partner who's gonna run this for us and stand this up. That's one of our challenges, we can, we're gonna be the brick and mortar builder, but we're looking for the partners who are gonna be the, provide the services and run it. So that's one of the key elements to these.
Well, as you can see, Council, we, we would, we have a lot of great ideas and project plans. We'd like to, if Council is, if approves of this initial plan, we would go out and do more work and put more staff time towards developing these program ideas and project ideas.
Mayor, we just need a sense of direction, that we're going in the right place. We'll continue working on these and bring them back. If Council just general direction, then that's what we kind of need.
Sure, and I'm sure that we all have something to say. I'm just gonna say, yes, I'd like to green light what, what we see so far. But to me, what I like about this also is the flexibility that's built into this. We really have through 2024 to write down in ink, you know, how this is gonna happen. And there's a lot of great ideas that are obviously at the top of the list, and I say full steam ahead, you know, on the things that we know are important. But there is still a lot of flexibility there and it takes time for really good ideas to percolate to the top, right? So that there are still some competing ideas out there and there's probably some ideas that we haven't thought about yet. But by, you know, by the time it's 2024, we're gonna say, oh, thank goodness, we didn't spend all that money because we were able to accomplish this thing that, that we all agree is a good use. So personally, I, yes, I like the direction. Let's go with Vice Mayor and then Ms. Spilsbury.
Just one comment on the restaurant incubator. So what we're looking at is getting the brick and mortar space and then having these restaurants kind of exercise for the first time, running their business and selling the food. So the public can go into the space, it's becoming a retail space, and be able to purchase from these restaurants, trying to get their start and grow their business. They can learn a lot and then they can launch hopefully into that, their own space. So it's a place that will provide economic benefit, not only to the city because of that activity. It gives us as a public a sense of enjoyment to discover new foods and really helps these, there's so many people who are running food trucks or tents on the side of the road or whatever, trying to make a go of their restaurant. And then they'll have the education on how to run the business and have the experience to really launch them into a successful business. And so I'm very excited for that. Regarding other concepts, I know, Mr. Brady, we've discussed it along with economic development in the Broadway corridor and developing that for a trade corridor. So the concept, and I've discussed it with Councilmember Haredi as well, is that between District Four and District Three along Broadway Road, we have many industrial trade-type businesses and focusing on inventorying that, looking, the spaces that are available, promoting that, looking at our zoning and making it an attractive area for, and this is in the qualified census tract, of having the opportunity for especially the surrounding neighborhoods to have that upskilling opportunity in their own backyard, so to speak. So then we could work with the businesses as well as provide, for the businesses to have apprenticeship programs. We could provide assistance, financial assistance for getting the CTE, whatever it takes to provide skilled workers to that stretch, which is really gonna bring up the census tract area that we have so many concerns.
You've expressed a little reticence.
It's okay, a little music always helps.
Glad I could help.
So bringing up the surrounding area of the census tract, have an opportunity to upskill and have the jobs is a great location and connected to the freeways. So I would like to somehow finding funding, whether in here or if there's other opportunities, to be able to explore that program map. We've done a little bit of work and start working, it's gonna take time, but I think it's a great opportunity, especially stretching closer to our downtown. We don't want to gentrify, we don't want to push out the people who are living in our area. We would just want to have the opportunities that they're part of the success and having better jobs. And so I don't know if it's appropriate in this bucket as well, is making sure that we support our PROMIS program, which is very related to this, as well as, you know, getting the education for the better jobs. And I just want to make sure that it's supported, we just in our first year, our kickoff right now, and how, using the funds to make sure that we have multiple years ahead of us. Maybe from each year, we can make sure that we're funding it. And of course, we're getting private funds as well to help supplement that, to make it as robust as possible and lift our community. So by the time, our goal really by using all these funds is to be able to really lift our, so we don't have to spend so much on the social services, that we're a more successful and, and healthy community and have more opportunities for everybody involved. And I think we have that opportunity. Otherwise, if we don't look at that way of developing our citizens, we will be in a continual, continually strapped for how do we get the cash to support our homeless, all the social services that we provide. And I'm so proud of what we do, but we need to look at how can we transform lives with this once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. So I'd like to pitch the Broadway corridor and make sure the PROMIS program is supported. Thank you. Oh, and is there anything for low-income childcare? Childcare is an issue for people getting back to work. I don't know if there's opportunities in other means?
Well, we didn't include any of that. We, as you can see, a lot, and this is based on kind of prior discussions, while there's some services in here, we really focused on brick and mortar kind of investments as opposed to that, so.
Okay, thank you.
So if heaven forbid COVID gets worse and we start seeing shutdowns and things go backwards instead of forwards, do we have the flexibility in this to change?
Yeah, I mean, all of this is just a preliminary plan, but if.
Well, like, when are we starting things? When are we gonna start spending money?
Right, well, right away. Some of these things can go initially pretty quickly. But then there's, I mean, I say that, there's a few that can go sooner because they're just simple procurements. But, you know, if it's a homeless solutions, that takes a lot of conversations and dialogues. If it's, so it's a combination of those things.
So we're just gonna.
But we still only have two, we've got to be ramp, you know, some of these brick and mortar things take a while to put together. I mean, the restaurant incubator, we, you know, that's gonna take a while. So we, it takes, you know, we have to be spinning this by 2026, so.
And just, I know one of our priors priorities was the broadband infrastructure. And I see that we're doing six million to the underdeserved neighborhoods, which is obviously the most important. Did we just kind of stop there? Because it just, anything past that would just be way too expensive.
It just gets into, yeah.
So there wasn't anything else to do past?
Oh, no, there, I mean.
Well, I mean, but without, without a huge cost.
Yeah, it's a tremendous, we've gone through an exercise where we've priced that out for the entire city and it's.
I assumed you had, I just.
It's not millions, it's billions.
Right, okay, okay.
Mr. Luna.
I just want to reiterate, I appreciate Jay being here as far as working with the new building, the building over here for economic development, working with our community. But I would be remiss if I didn't mention, we really still need to continue work with workforce development. I appreciate Jen's comment, working with Mesa Community College. We have a wonderful program, Mesa Council on College. We need to continue supporting those programs for, because at the end of the day, we want to make sure that we have a workforce that supports our community. And so providing an education piece, starting with Mesa K-ready, we gotta start there and Natalie knows that very well. But we need to continue to support those kind of programs to uplift our community. And certainly, workforce development is critical and working with economic development and working with the PROMIS program. We can't lose sight of that and working with the Entrepreneur Program that my colleague here just mentioned. So, so thank you.
All right, well, thank you, you know, a couple hundred million times, thank you. This is the money that is gonna, as has been said, this is gonna be just a generational impact on, on our community. So obviously, we need to do this very thoughtfully and very carefully and I think we're off to a great start. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You bet. Next item on our agenda is Item Three, Current Event Summary, including meetings and conferences attended. Council, would you like to share anything with us?
Not at ten o'clock.
Okay, all right. I know Mr. Haredi is walking out, but the only thing I'll add is Mr. Haredi and Ms. Spilsbury chaired a great first meeting of our Education Roundtable just a few days ago. You were probably gonna mention it, but I just wanted to say thank you for that. It's fun to see that up and running. Thank you very much.
I have to take a few seconds to say Happy Women's Equality Day. I wear my T-shirt, so I have to take the moment to say that women belong in all places where decisions are made. And I enjoy sharing this space with you at this table with you, on Councilmember Spilsbury. So Happy Women's Equality Day, thank you.
I would have worn my T-shirt if I knew that it was the date. Council, anything else you'd like to share with us? All right, Mr. Brady, what's our schedule look like?
See you on Monday.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, is there a motion to adjourn? All in favor, please say aye. We are adjourned.